But they brought him in the day.
Okay, call the roll please.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
I move we go into closed session of the city council, discuss strategy with council about matters that are presently in litigation because public disclosure would be likely to prejudice or disadvantage the position of the city in that litigation.
Second.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Greckin.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Closed session.
Second.
Greckin.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
We'll be back in five.
Five minutes.
Waters.
Here.
Aye.
Can we stand for a moment in the silent period followed by the pledge of allegiance, please?
It's very convincing with the answer.
Yeah. Amen. Pledge allegiance.
To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have an interview. Plenty of proclamations, but we have an interview with Pat Roessacker. Pat, come on up and tell us why you want to be on the parking and skywalk system board.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to be on the parking and skywalk board just to serve the community and I'm employed with Central Bank and Skywalk is connected to the Central Bank building and we'd just like to see it clean and, you know, safe.
What do you do at the bank?
I'm an analyst too. So I work with a bunch of lenders over there.
Have to watch all Scott's loans, huh?
Yeah. For sure.
Well, I've gotten to know Pat a little bit through the Sioux City Growth Organization and I'm happy that you're looking for more ways to give back and get involved. I'm excited.
Appreciate it.
So thank you.
Appreciate the consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. You got Alex's vote, I guess you're in.
Hey, he's under sixty and looking at getting involved. I think that's a good thing, Mayor.
Hurts for you. All right, thanks for applying, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Matt.
We'll move to consent agenda, which today is three through thirteen B. Consider every item to a pass unless a council member asks for a separate roll call vote. If you want to speak on any item on the consent agenda or any other item on the agenda, please come forward as I read it. If you want to speak on something not on the agenda, please come up under citizen concerns. I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Three is the reading of the city council minutes of November sixth, two thousand seventeen. I will abstain, I was not here. Four is the motion accepting the building and housing code board annual report. Five is the resolution adopting the Rose Hill design guidelines for property and the Rose Hill historic history. Anyone to be heard on that? Six is a resolution temporary closing portions of the Lakeport and Cedar Street.
Jeff Hanson, Community Development Operations Manager. I know we have a few people here that may want to speak on this item. I would just provide a quick introduction that earlier this year, we received a request from a property owner along this stretch of roadway and if I can get the map pulled up, I'll show a general area map of the roadway in question. So as a reference, this is Bacon Creek Park. This is a portion of roadway in green that has been requested to be closed. I want to clarify that we're not proposing to vacate and sell at this time, we're just simply requesting the roadway to be closed, which would be closed with gates and be keyed. And the one property owner that has property on both sides of vehicles, the roadway itself is very difficult to maintain, there's a lot of washouts. And also, we reached out to both city utilities, fire and police and they see no opposition to closing the street at this time. If there's issues in the, in the future where this property would develop or we see a need to open it, we can go back in and open it, it would still remain as right of way.
Anyone to be heard?
Do we worry about it coming under disrepair and things like that if, if we close it down now and then want to reopen it later? I mean, is that a concern at all?
During the closure, it will not be maintained. So there could be issues that occur along the roadway, whether it be washouts or stormwater issues, lack of maintenance, lack of gravel. The adjacent property owner in this case would be responsible to maintain it to their desire to be able to access the property. So whatever that minimum maintenance is to gain access to the farm, they would be responsible for that.
Or bringing it back up to the level it was?
No, just to maintain it for their access. I'm sure that at some point in time, if this does develop, we will have to go back in there and, and fix it after it has been closed for some time. But we're already out there weekly fixing ruts and washouts and picking up garbage, so I'm not sure by closing it and having future expenses for reopening it wouldn't be so bad.
Okay.
Anyone to be heard on this?
Can I say something?
Yeah. No, you gotta come, you gotta come to the mic and state your name and address.
I gotta come up here?
Yep, you gotta state your name and address for the record.
You'll make me scared to talk, huh?
Well, not my rules, it's the city attorney, so.
My name is Jeff Simone and, and I run that farm on both sides of the road there and Alice Saylor is just sitting back here, she owns it and I manage it. And I can see there are a lot of reasons to close that road. First of all, he talked about the dumping, okay? And, and I'm out there every day and I see what goes on out there every day. There's furniture, all kinds of trash being dumped along that road constantly. And then four-wheel drive pickups after a rain, you just count on it, set your watch to it. Tearing up and down that road, in and out of the ditches, any way they can find to get their trucks muddy, that's where they're at out there. I've been out there seven, eight years, nine years, something like that, and I saw at least three trucks tipped over, flipped. Where Lakeport runs to Fourteenth Street, there's a big steep drop off right there. I've seen be right there with the arrow, yeah, right there. Car, I've seen a car go straight off that into a big steep drop off, maybe fifteen, twenty foot deep right there. I'm surprised no one's been killed, okay? And you come back the other way, there's a real sharp corner right there and I've seen people getting wrecks in that area too. There's just, it's a nasty, nasty blind spot going around that corner right there. And I'm really nervous every time I go around that corner that someone's, one of these kids are gonna go a hundred miles an hour around that corner. They can't see me until they're right on top of me, there's no way to, no way to see you there. And then we've got people cutting our fences, four-wheel driving in our hayfields, our cornfields. Jumping trash in our ground is another thing. I mean, it's just all kinds of, so, I mean, I'd kind of miss it if it got shut down because I, I do have the access, so I don't have an agenda one way or the other. But if, if I had my choice, I would, I would prefer to have the thing shut down because of all the headaches that road caused. Somebody's getting dead out there, okay?
I need your address too.
Pardon me?
I need your address for the record.
My, my personal addri, I don't live out there, but I farm.
Just your personal address.
Um, I live on Hiawatha, forty-two thirty Hiawatha Trail.
That's all we need.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
Hey, Rick Bertrand, fifteen oh one PV Street. Sometimes I was told not to sell what's been sold, but I just want to make sure that from a clarity standpoint, why we're asking, I was one of the ones that petitioned to get it closed. Lived out there almost my whole life and probably in the last two to three years, it's just kind of become the Wild West. Things have changed and somebody's gonna get hurt out there. There's not really any type of a advantage, like I said, with what Jeff says and the rest of us out there is, it's nice to go to Menards, it's nice to go to, it's convenience to kind of cut through that cut through, but right now, there really is no reason for it. There's twelve properties that sit on the road. Eleven of the twelve people signed the petition that said they were all for closing it. Again, it is going to create a minute or two of inconvenience to a couple of people, including ourselves, but when you look at really, we're all on limited service agreements out there anyway, so it's not like we're cutting ourselves off from fire and police or anything like that. And I think what we've learned is a lot of us are on dead end spurs, is that people that are kind of do, you know, the drugs, the, the racing, the dumping, they don't like dead ends, one in, one outs, makes them nervous. And all of the spurs that are kind of off of this road, we don't get the garbage, we don't get the troublemakers, but that seems to be that straightaway where they can come in one end and go out the other. It just kind of turns into kind of the Wild West. So I do like the idea that was discussed that Mr. Hanson said about leaving, reserving the right that if some development or something happens out there, you know, we all kind of get back into it. But we've also learned is that the neighbors themselves, I think, will take care, in partnership with the city, will take care of this road a little bit better and get into shape and again, look after each other. So again, I just, I, I strongly thank the city for the consideration.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Anyone else? Okay. We'll move on. Seven is a resolution adopting plans and specifications for the Singing Hills ground storage reservoir exterior painting project. Mr. Mayor.
Oh, Rick's gonna talk.
Yeah.
Rick Mock, Special Assistant to the City Manager. Mayor and Council, I'd like to kind of lead you through how we came to where we're at today with the plans and specifications. This tower is built in the nineteen ninety-five era. It is in need of painting. Back when we brought forward the painting of the Indian Hills Water Tower in July of two thousand fourteen, the council suggested that we look at some options to put artwork on that, which we believe, if I recall correctly, is about forty thousand dollars. Council chose not to proceed with that, but continued to suggest to staff that we look at options. We did come to council in January of two thousand seventeen and at that time, we asked council for direction on proceeding with Singing Hills Tower. A committee was established. Rhonda sits on that committee, as does Cindy Waite, Steerhood, and the cost estimate for that is twenty, thirty thousand dollars for the artwork. The basic painting of the tank has to happen and that is estimated a hundred and ninety thousand right now. There is a line item called out in the specifications currently that does identify the cost of the artwork itself. And by addendum, we could have that pulled out as a separate alternate bid so that council can make a decision when we're ready to award, but the basic painting of the tank does need to happen. We're starting to see spalling of that concrete.
And there was fundraising efforts for the artwork side of it, is that right? I remember reading that.
There's an effort to reach out to individuals for some cost sharing and we're not sure if we have that tied in or not. Rhonda, could you speak better to that?
Sure. We actually visited with Cindy Waite and she had mentioned about maybe coming up with some money for it, so, and I just texted her a while back, I haven't heard back from her yet today, so I'm waiting on that and ten thousand dollars was brought up at the time for that, so. I don't think we'd have a problem with the fundraising part of it for the painting and I think we're talking maybe twenty thousand dollars for the painting. And Avery says, I, I'm not sure if we have to put a bid out for this or not, but Steve Avery was also on our board and he was willing to sit down and talk, so we have options.
Well, here's my concern. And I, and I recognize the need to do the work on the water tower. I have no problem with that. But it kind of, it's kind of a, in the category of need and must, it's a little easier to make a decision, but when it's just something you want to decorate, that would be fine too, but I hesitate on, I think, Rick, you're right, I think originally we were talking when, and I think it was my suggestion, Sioux City Sioux, and if, if you're gonna do notes on it, but it was maybe in the thirty to forty category then and we thought we had to get an attorney involved and, and I don't know, pay royalties or do whatever, but even at the twenty to thirty range, I hesitate. It's, it's not a need, it's not a must, it's something we would like to have to decorate. I, I just, I have a tough time pulling the trigger with anywhere from twenty to thirty thousand dollars when I think the money can probably be better spent somewhere else in, in the overall budget. So I, I probably am inclined to bid or to vote no. I would, I brought it up with Rick this morning in conversation, if this could be bid as an alternate. And, and we're only actually adopting plans inspection, we'd have to approve the contract at a later time, but, but I I don't have any way of knowing and prior to reading the article in the paper today, I wasn't sure what the bid was. This, the memo in July, maybe I blew right over, I'm not sure. But the memo in July says twenty to thirty again and, and that just seems like a large amount to me to spend.
Okay, so here's my thought on it. We have talked about this for a while and, Mr. Mayor, you know our discussions on this. I myself would think that'd be an awesome thing to do with our water tower because we have people coming in and out of town and if they see Sioux City, I think it's an, it's an added attraction to all the good things that, that we have going on. And the bottom line is if we can raise the money, no foul, no.
Oh, I don't have any problems with it.
You know, no foul, no hurt, so, so, you know, if, if we're looking at trying to raise twenty or thirty thousand dollars, I see not a problem with that. It's got to be painted anyway, so that's where I'm going with it and, and actually, I think that we could get it done.
And if anybody could, you probably could. And, and the private contributions to help city government have been outstanding from my perspective and, and that public and private cooperation has just been great. But again, I, it just seems to me that twenty to thirty thousand dollars could be better spent. And with budget coming up and we have additional expenses coming this year, I just, I certainly.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. My name is Chris Jensen. I live at one twelve Twenty Fourth Street. I know not a lot about this issue, other than I heard it when it came up before and I opened up the paper today. And I see city is considering opting not to put the lyrics and music for Sioux City Sioux on the water tower. And I'm reading why and it struck me as you're objecting to having to pay a licensing fee for the song. Well, of course, you know you got to pay a licensing fee for the song. The beauty of the idea, and I think if you came up with it originally, I like your support, it's a great idea. Now, are we gonna cut off our nose to spite our face because we have to pay a licensing fee for something that we don't know? When it adds humor, enjoyability, recognition, how many times will you now see this picture somewhere, Sioux City Sioux, on the thing, with the songs? You are getting free publicity well beyond the thirty or forty thousand dollars that it would cost to do it. A good idea is a good idea. You come up with a lot of ideas, some of which are good, some of which are not. This is a good idea. This will help the city. The amount of money that you're talking about is a pittance when you consider the long-term effect of it. Go with it, don't doubt yourself. And if there's an issue, make an appeal. We got, I got a call the other day from a service club. And they appeal, hey, we're gonna send twenty thousand handicap kids to a Bronson, Missouri show, give us twenty bucks. And so I said to this service club, what are you gonna do for it? Well, we don't know yet, we're just raising money. And I go, don't call me if you don't have an idea. And then I go, you've got this going on in the Saratoma Park, so what if you have a Kewanas water tower sponsored by some other service club? You can raise the money, you can get service clubs competing with each other for doing it, but it's a good idea. Do it. I would secondly say, if you don't want to do that idea, don't spend the money to put some fictitious notes that do nothing, don't have any words, it's just scribbles on a water tower for twenty-six thousand. Pay the fee, do it, it's the right thing. Thank you.
What is the fee?
We did not get that far because when the attorneys told us that we would have to do copyright investigation and pay for the fees for the copyright, we chose not to proceed.
There again, we don't even know what the cost is and the fact of it is, it's a good idea.
And for you to have gone forward and not assumed you'd have to pay the fee, of course you know you're gonna pay the fee.
Well, I don't know that you are because the copyright doesn't last forever. I have to renew mine every year, I don't know who would be renewing the copyright for.
Whoever bought the song.
Well.
They're in song books, you buy, but there's a fee, that's fine.
Well, I pay, I pay the ASCAP and I pay the NBI for football games, I'm well aware of that, but if, if you, you still have to renew that copyright every eight years, so it's not hard to check to see if there's a copyright.
Well, we, we will assume that somebody has the right and they're gonna charge for it, I just say you pay it, who cares?
Mr. Jensen's also correct in that if we do go with Sioux City Sioux, that the cost does go up.
Should. Because it's a unique song and we are a unique city and this song can only be used by one city in this world. And if we want, and there's only one song in this world that fits that to a T, and if you want to use it, you're gonna have to pay for it. Okay.
You know what?
That's part of doing business.
I'm with you. I, I love your, I love your enthusiasm, that's.
Yeah. I read the paper, you can't just shoot this idea down for.
You guys are the head of the fundraising team right there, there you go, Rick.
Okay, there you go.
Just volunteer.
The famous word of everybody that's come before you, it's not my job, but I think it's a great idea, go with it. And anything short of that is, is just you're selling yourself short. It, it's too good.
You know, I want people to remember Sioux City when, when they're going through. And also, I don't know if, if everybody's all up to date on what's gonna go on this thing, but on the top, it's gonna say Sioux City, so when you have planes flying over, they're gonna know where they're at.
Let me give you a story, how many of you have driven up to the Twin Cities taking the Highway sixty or whatever? You come out of the, you come into the valley of the Jolly Green Giant and there at the top of the hill is the Jolly Green Giant. Now, I've never been in. Gonna be a picture picked up by US Today at some time.
Everybody should be saying that. I agree with you a hundred percent.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I mean, what, what the hell, twenty thousand for that kind of publicity? If you don't go wrong.
I'll raise the money.
There we go.
There you go.
There we go.
Put it on paper.
I'll put it on paper.
If this thing gets passed, I pledge a hundred dollars towards it right now.
Okay.
Well, and I, I definitely agree, I think that as long as we can raise the funds, I think that it's a great opportunity and it's a lot of publicity. I mean, I think you look at the downtown murals that we've been seeing and the great publicity, you go on social media and you can search hashtags and search people, they're posting that photo all over of that this is Sioux City. I think that there's good return on that investment, but I agree, if we can raise that twenty thousand dollars or whatever privately, I think it's a great endeavor. I think that you can send that memo out to a lot of people and say, we want to raise money for this.
Well, the cost will go up if we do go to a specific song.
Yeah. And I think we just need to know, we just need to know what that figure is.
Let's, let's find out what, what the copyright would be or if there is.
Exactly, you just have to know that figure.
Your memo dated July eighteenth says that the estimated cost for hiring an attorney doing a copyright search and paying the rights to use it is thirty-five hundred dollars. So somebody probably checked then and.
I did, yes.
Yeah. Well, I see Reagan's here, maybe Reagan wants to pledge downtown partners helping this thing, I don't know.
It's not downtown, it's not downtown, Pete.
Oh, yeah.
Well, they're, they're marketing, we're talking about marketing the city now.
Then that's tourism dollars, there you go.
May I suggest to move this forward, that you direct staff to take that as an alternate bid and we can move forward on fundraising? The artwork can go on at any time.
Take it as an alternate.
I think needs to be painted.
I prefer that. Does that need a motion? Yeah, I'll move that we take, take the painting, whatever it is, as an alternate bid.
Okay.
Second.
Second, yeah.
I assume you're talking painting with this specific lyrics to the song, Sioux City Sioux. Great.
Anything, just the additional painting is going to be the alternate, yeah.
But the notes will be for Sioux City Sioux.
Right.
What's before the council?
It will be whatever it is, yeah.
Well, what's before the council today is a resolution to adopt plans and specs, is the direction to adopt and then have an addendum issued.
Wouldn't be an addendum, you bid as an alternate.
That's what the addendum will cover.
We have to make an addendum to make it into.
To do the alternate.
That's what my motion is, yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Call the roll on that.
Greckin.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Waters.
Aye.
Capron.
Aye.
Let, let me just say this. We built that thing when I was on the council last time, it was an ugly thing when we built it. I've argued for the last thirty-five years, forty years, that we ought to paint the dang thing something and, and I have, we've not been successful. I don't really care if it's Sioux City Sioux, I wanted Mary to go round, couldn't get that done, but we didn't have a trademark or copyright issue, but you're gonna pay so much money to put Sioux City up there. You have to put something on the front of this this time, you can't paint it blue again and hope that it's attractive because it's not. You spent millions of dollars out in that area on Cone Park and other things, the ballpark improvements, all that sort of stuff. And I know what you're saying, Pete, but this is not necessarily one we have to go begging for because the Sioux City is gonna be on there and cost you money no matter what you do. So you're really only talking the copyright and a couple of other letters. We have to paint something on the side of that so people know they're in Sioux City. It's a cheap entrance sign if nothing else.
Exactly.
A billboard.
But go raise as much money as you can, but it's not gonna be a deal killer for me, I can tell you that, just so you know.
Thanks, Rick.
Okay, actions relating to agreements and contracts, there is a resolution approving a change order.
Wait, Bob.
Wait, Bob.
It's about a motion.
It's in the consent agenda.
Correct, but we have to move it-
Vote on the, uh-
On the motion to amend, and then-
I vote, we voted on the amendment, which means that, okay. You amended that motion, then the regular motion is in the regular agenda, but call the roll anyway.
Thank you.
Scott?
Aye.
Waters?
Aye.
Caprin?
Aye.
We're gonna do a parliamentary study on that, 'cause like you're-
We have special-
It's already in there. Resolution approving change order number two to the contract to Christian construction for the two thousand seventeen Cone Park Splash Pad and Rink project. B is Park Elementary Childhood Center Trail Edition project. C is a resolution approving amendment number two to the consulting services agreement with DGR, engineering for the city fuel, uh, island project. Nine are actions relating to personnel. A is a resolution amending the position classification manual by adopting an updated job description for the wastewater treatment plant operation supervisor position. B is a resolution amending the Pats salary schedule by adding a wastewater treatment plant operation supervisor position. Ten are actions authorizing the issuance of checks. A is a resolution authorizing final payment that will keep elevator for the elevator modernization at Lewis and Clark Ballpark. B is a resolution approving partial settlement of a torque claim and authorizing payment. Eleven is approving all total checks issued for the reporting period October two thousand seventeen in the amount of eleven million, two hundred fifty-eight thousand, eighty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents. Twelve are applications for beer and liquor license. See the list. You have any questions, come forward. Thirteen, a receipt of minutes. See the list. Come forward if you have any questions. Anyone to be heard on any of those items? You voting electronically or calling?
It should be us.
Passes four zero. Fourteen is a hearing and resolution determining an area of the city to be blighted in economic development area designated as an urban renewal project and adopting amendment number one to the urban renewal plan for the combined Central Sioux City CBD Urban Renewal Area. I'll move it.
Second.
See, you ever thought I was gonna say something bad about the painting?
I did. About what?
About the painting on this, you should realize that maybe once in a while, I'm not an old guy like you think I am.
Got fluffy.
I appreciated that very much. I was surprised.
Passes four to zero.
I was pleasantly surprised.
Fifteen is a hearing and resolution determining the area of the city to be blighted in economic development area designated it as an urban renewal project and adopting amendment number one to the urban renewal plan for the Donner Park Urban Renewal Area. I'll move it.
Second. Your grandkids will appreciate it.
Yes, they will. That's weird.
Ray?
Passes four zero. Sixteen is a hearing and resolution determining area of the city to be blighted in economic development area, designating it as an urban renewal project and adopting amendment number one to the urban renewal plan for the combined Floyd River Urban Renewal Area. I'll move it.
Second.
Not I, said the duck.
Whack.
It's Rhonda.
It's not lit up.
Yeah, it's not lit up.
Ready?
Yep.
Waters?
Aye.
Caprin?
Aye.
Greckin?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye. Seventeen is a resolution approving a reinvestment district contract with IEDA. I'll move it.
Second.
Just wanna say that this has taken a lot of effort on the part of a lot of people in our community. And if all of these projects come to fruition, it, I hope, I believe it will be a game changer for our community like no other recent project. So, I'm excited to hope that everything comes together. Eighteen is a Downtown Partners quarterly update.
I agree.
Totally.
Look at that bag. Shop small.
We're gonna do it your way. You're the attorney. We'll let it go.
Yeah.
Oh, does he even open up? I thought it opened up.
You thought it was a ring or something.
I thought it was a ring, yeah.
Thanks, Kalen. Have you sent one here for Dan?
No. He's not here, he doesn't get them.
Thank you.
He'll get one eventually, isn't he?
Or actually, it could be at the next meeting. You wanna just keep it in the next meeting and give it to him?
Yeah.
Yeah? Okay. Sorry.
Bring it. Well, good evening. Thank you for your time once again. We appreciate these updates. Every quarter Downtown Partners likes to present to you what we've been working on and also what's coming forward, so that you have a chance to not only see what's happening, but provide any input that you might have. Uh, this is the list of our current board of directors. It has not changed since the last time I updated you in August. Um, we have, however, Todd Moyer has left the Hard Rock Hotel Casino. Uh, the board did approve to hold that position for the next general manager of the Hard Rock, considering their position on Downtown Partners and the financials. Um, who you just met walking around with you is Kalen Sortino. Kalen is probably the most energetic person I think I've ever met. Um, if you think I'm excited at these things.
Probably.
Yeah.
Pretty close.
Kalen comes to us actually from Kansas City. She's a graduate of Briar Cliff University, and she has stuck around Suland. So she is, uh, doing very, very well. She has her master's degree in leadership, and she was hired on as the business support coordinator for Downtown Partners. Now, this is the first full-time staff person we have been able to hire out for this position. Um, so her expectation, the expectation of her, I should say, is very high, but she's doing great. She's been out, um, introducing herself to businesses all over downtown for the last couple weeks, um, and has already started on a couple initiatives that she'll get to here quickly. I'll pass over some things, and then I'll let her take you on what she's been working on. Um, a quick overview of the financials, again, hasn't changed much since you saw them in August. This is a fiscal review of what our budget is and what we have to work with. Uh, to date, which is actually very good, we have forty-two percent of our income in, and thirty-five of it has been expended. Um, thirty-five percent, excuse me. And we are starting on July one, so that is right where we should be and right where we have been. Usually, I check back a couple years every time, about this year. Um, this is the district that we're currently going out. We are in a SMID renewal. As of July one, two thousand eighteen, Downtown Partners goes out to our five hundred and thirty properties, um, and asks for their support to continue what we're doing and continue another five years with the organization. The dark green is what you see in the two thousand thirteen was approved in that, that timeframe. What we've added is the light green. What we're proposing this year is not only to include Virginia Square, which was not even a twinkle in our eye in two thousand thirteen and has come to fruition. We've included that area and then down to include all of what would you would be the riverfront development. Now, those developments are again coming up quickly, and we'll see them in the next five years. So it's something that we wanna be able to help with and support in any way we can. So we've included that-
Where? What one?
I'm sorry, what?
What one did you say? What development?
The riverfront development.
Yeah.
To go all the way down to the Floyd Channel. So we go that far.
You wanna go down there so you can spend money there, right?
Right. Correct, Bob.
I know we've, I know we've talked about it before, too, but I hope there are plans to include West Seventh at some point.
Uh, West Seventh would, to be quite honest, I know you and I have talked about this a little bit.
Yeah.
I think West Seventh would be a wonderful SMID in itself. I mean, to include what they do. I don't know if that's something that we can sure look at, but for Downtown Partners to start going that direction, you're branching out in areas that would be a little outside of what we do. Um, but I think in and themselves, they have their own mission. They have, they could have a really good prosperity for it.
Okay.
Um, and I'm happy to help with that organization and-
I know some of those businesses need a lot of help, so.
I'm always happy to help.
We can't afford the taxes we got.
Get out of here.
We can talk about that.
Okay.
Um, and the other thing that we've included, and I'm not sure why in the past, but not all of Mercy's properties were in the district in two thousand thirteen. They are properties. Mercy is an exempt organization. However, just to make sure that we've included everyone in that area is something that we really strongly looked at. The small light square you see up in the upper right is actually Doc's Warehouse. In two thousand thirteen, it was industrial, so it was not included. It has now become an entertainment and a bar district, so that had to be included in the district as well. Every time we do a SMID renewal, we have to do the map first before we start going out and asking for approvals. So this is something that we have to take with us, and we have to identify the area.
Why would you not go back? Why would you not walk Court Street all the way up?
Which street? I'm sorry.
I mean, is it-
The way over?
Court Street all the way-
Oh, Court Street.
You're carving out Dave's Bad Lot there? Is that why? I mean, why are you doing that?
Of course, it's all zoned industrial. So we only do the entertainment district and the commercial properties. So that is zoned, the way it is zoned is industrial. So we do not include those. That's a good question. We get that, we get that as well. Um, the big thing we are working on, have been working on, and will continue to work on, we are moving forward fairly quickly. If you don't recognize this, this is from the Roger Brooks Study. Uh, the one thing that we need is a wayfinding system in downtown. Now, we've worked with the city and the chamber since Roger Brooks came in. Uh, what we've done is we took that over, we put out an RFQ for wayfinding for the design. This is something-
Their project is why-
Now it is.
Now it is.
It was their project from the day Rod, the Brobrooks Study. Don't let them try to put that on the city. That was their project.
Wayfinding?
Yes. You were gonna take that initiative when you did that study way back two and a half, three years ago.
Okay. Well, we're on it.
Okay.
Good answer.
I'm like, I got nothing other than-
Let me take you back memory lane. If you forgot, if you remember, the Hard Rock and none of that was included in, and you were, you expanded that, so you'd have additional resources to do these type of projects. Stop me when I'm wrong, because it was not included in, and they didn't want in right away, because it doubled the amount of SMID. You got basically another hundred and some thousand dollars. And as part of that, you were gonna do some of these projects. Now, that's the truth.
Wayfinding has always been on my radar. I will not deny that one iota. We haven't had new wayfinding since Third Street came in, since we had Launchpad, since Hard Rock. We need wayfinding.
Yeah.
The fact that everyone else finally came on board to help, it's hun, it's thousands of dollars. It's not something that we have in our budget to do by ourselves, and we appreciate that. And so the trifecta of cost to get the design going, to get things started, is where we're at now. We sent out the RFQ for design. We've got nine proposals from throughout the country to work on our wayfinding in downtown and surrounding areas. With that, we selected Corbin Design. They used to be out of Des Moines, they are now out of Traverse City, Michigan, and they are going to come in to do the design. Tomorrow, we approach the chamber, their executive committee for the additional ten grand, uh, to do the design. They are staying within the thirty thousand dollar budget. They are ready to go, and we can have things ready for fabrication and install by summer. So thankfully, yes, it's moving. And we'll sign on the fifteenth.
It's moving, get it? Pun. That's pun.
Like what I did there. Um, just to give you an idea of what to expect when they come back, I didn't want any surprises. They have two tasks. Task, task one, and again, please remember this is just design. This does not include bid or fabrication. Uh, deliverables are a digital version of the wayfinding recommendations that they will have for us at the end. That takes about two months. Once we get contracts signed at the end of November, we should have that by January and February. Task two is initial design. From there, we get the deliverables, we get two digital summaries of what's happening and what they suggest, so that we can actually have something to look at. And that takes one to two months. So by May of next year, we'll have design, and we'll also have their recommendations on bid and fabrication. Uh, we just got done talking about this, but the murals are complete. Again, it was funded through a Gilcrest grant. We have utilized all the twenty-five thousand dollars to bring in two very different artists, uh, one of which was from the state. Jenna Brownlee did the This is Sioux City on Amazon Fourth. And then Martin Ron and his associate did the Buffalo on Fifth Street. Those were both completed at the end of October. We hope to continue this in some other way, because we've had a lot of success and a lot of people asking about these. You love them, you hate them, but they are just truly amazing, and their work is, is well-known.
Have you seen those yet, Bob?
You can't really miss the big Buffalo.
You can't miss, can't miss a thirty-foot Buffalo. Kind of-
I'll do it now while I'm thinking about it, so you don't forget it.
One thing that I, and I forget, I haven't texted you about or followed up. I want us to think about how to light these up at night. I know we're talking about a lot of lighting projects and things like that. But, I mean, you look at where the Buffalo is and a great deal of that traffic is that downtack. There are no streetlights. There's nothing. And I don't know if it would even be an opportunity where we can put lights, like spotlight-type things, on the building across the parking lot or whatever you'd wanna call it right there, across shining onto it or something.
Okay.
I would really want us to look into how to do that. The one, This is Sioux City on Ms., there's enough light down there for the most part. I mean, a lot more than the Buffalo that at least you can see it in the evening when people are down in Fourth Street and having dinner, drinking, whatever they wanna do. But I just want us to light that up and showcase that at night as well as during the day.
Okay. I'll talk to, actually, right across from that is the apartment complex.
Yeah, exactly.
Let me see what, and if anything, they can do. We also, yet Gooseman still has signage and lighting that has yet to be installed. They just moved in a couple of weeks ago. So I am kinda waiting to see how bright their lights end up being, to see how that works. And if we can talk to them to see maybe about some downlighting up top, just to...
Do you think they'd be excited to showcase that as well? You know what I mean?
Yeah, we can definitely start the conversation.
All right. Thank you.
You bet.
Sorry, Caitlin.
Thank you.
Okay. So the community work group for Downtown Partners worked on launching a visual campaign for vacant spaces downtown. That is up now. We have eight spaces. And basically, this is just trying to help community members and anyone driving by, walking by, knowing what's available downtown, what's vacant, and trying to imagine the possibilities of what can be there. So I think we're getting great feedback so far on it. A lot of people have, at least ideas are coming forward, which is a great start. And now what I'm really excited to talk about is Small Business Saturday on November 25th. So what I put in front of you, these blue squares. I have 20 downtown retail shops that have signed up for Small Business Saturday to participate in the bingo board. There's gonna be more locations open that day, but 20 of them are what are gonna be a part of the game. So everyone's gonna get this blue square. And I've asked them to hide it in plain sight in their stores. When customers find it, they'll get a signature in their designated box. They can either play for a standard bingo, five in a row, and then they get their name in a drawing for Downtown Cash and Sioux City Bandits tickets. Or if they wanna play the full board and get a blackout bingo, they get more Downtown Cash and a chance for more Sioux City Bandits tickets. I've gotten great responses and feedbacks from the businesses itself and people in the public. Everyone's really excited. I think the small businesses are eager to find new ways to bring foot traffic into their shops. And this is a great way to, if nothing else, get a new customer in the door and get that moment to where they can start communicating with one another. So, does anyone have any questions on it?
Looks good.
I'm so excited.
That's awesome.
And there's gonna be door prizes. And we have now a couple of businesses that wanna donate gifts for drawings for people who've participated. It's fun, simple, easy, costs them nothing, except for their time.
Awesome. Good job.
Thank you.
And if we can continue to blast the stuff on social media, especially about the route or the different businesses. I think free publicity would be nice for all these.
Yeah, we're gonna start publicizing where they can pick up the bingo boards besides just printing them off themselves. We're gonna print some off and give them to all the businesses that are participating. Maybe have some here downstairs, just a bunch of different locations so it's easily accessible.
And the Journal will be printing the bingo board as well.
Yep.
So you can get it from the paper.
Get it in the paper?
Yep.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Everywhere. It's going to be everywhere.
Well, in that vein, we have Downtown for the Holidays. This is Monday, November 20th. This is why we're probably doing the update this week and not next week so that we can get you out of here in time to hopefully participate in the parade. At 3 o'clock, Launchpad Children's Museum is offering again free admission. And this time, they're taking donations for the warming shelter. So any hand warmers, any toiletries that you can, the kids will get in free to Launchpad till 5:30. On their way to the parade, they have been walking down Pearl Street, which puts them in front of Evolve Yoga. And Evolve Yoga sets out free hot choc... Evolve Yoga at 411 Pearl. They walk down the street so they get free hot chocolate on their way to the parade. At 6:15, the Festival of Trees and the Parade both kick off. Festival of Trees is in the Ho-Chunk Center. Again, this year, it goes to the community action agency's Welcome Home Shelter. The auction will be on November 30th this year. It's usually a pretty big event for everybody. The Lighted Parade, Fourth, and then Turn Up Nebraska. That's really convenient this year, actually, for the Santa's House because they're right across the street from the tree. They're over at 409 Nebraska. They're in the Century Apartments building. So they're lighting that up and decorating it already. So that'll be a nice, quick walk for Santa. And then we have Small Business Saturday that Saturday.
Short sleigh ride.
A short sleigh ride. Yeah.
Yeah, he doesn't walk.
He doesn't really get off the sleigh. The horses will take him just over short. So this is just the route. Again, reminding people that please utilize the parking ramps. This night is very busy downtown. We also, we try to open up the streets as fast as we can. But please, do not underestimate the amount of people that come down there. Utilize the ramps. The last thing I just wanted to make sure everybody knew about and reminded them of is this is another great public meeting for the riverfront development. On Thursday, November 30th, at 7 o'clock here in Council Chambers, I'm sure Matt would agree with me that this is gonna be a big deal. We've done a lot of, we've been doing a lot of work for the riverfront development. And to have this public input session will be a great, great piece to it. So with that, that's the end of our presentation. I'm happy to...
Great job.
Great job.
Thank you.
Anyone have anything? One thing that I would just bring up or encourage you to work with. I know I talked to Caitlin a little bit about it this weekend when we were at an event as well. I want us to do more work downtown, working with building owners, real estate agents, all of those things, talking about the district that we want to have, the type of district that we wanna have downtown, the types of businesses that we want downtown. I don't know what we can do as a city necessarily, but I think that when you talk to building owners, and I was, I had quite a long conversation with Dick Salem about this. And I understand that building and property owners want to, you know, the first person that wants to move into a vacant space, of course, they wanna sell it, right? They wanna be able to recoup their costs and have money coming in. But if we want to have a downtown area like shopping and stores and people walking, I mean, you're gonna have to have a lot of different properties and restaurants or whatever. I mean, if you go, Pete always talks, isn't it the 10 by 10 by 10? If you wanna do something like that, that Roger Brooks talks about, you have to have these business or these building owners and the real estate agents pushing for that as well. There are certain businesses that I just don't like seeing in some of our areas downtown. I mean, as much as I want them not to be vacant and dark, I don't want them to be filled with people that it's dark at night anyway. You know what I mean? If people are on Fourth Street or in different areas, if it's just gonna be dark in that area when people are down there. I mean, I'd rather focus on other industries or other types of business to get down there. And if Reagan and Caitlin, if you can help, I would love to have a meeting with different building owners, downtown, real estate agents. I talked, when I talked with Dick Salem, that's what I said, is I said, you gotta get, we gotta get everyone on board and understanding what these problems are. And some of the stuff that I was bringing up to him, he was like, well, I guess I never really thought about that. I just focused on my portion of it. And it's like, I get that. But we need to have a serious vision of what we want and getting everyone on board there.
I couldn't agree more. I didn't wanna interrupt you. And these SMID calls, and I call them SMID calls, I hope you know what I mean. But we go out to all the property owners and we start talking about these sort of things. Caitlin is very familiar with the 10, 10, 10. I think that was in her introduction and then every week following that.
I'm pretty sure I read it like once a week.
Yeah.
Yeah, we like to call it placemaking a little bit more. But sometimes it is, it's individual property owners saying, I know your space is available. And it is so easy as a property owner to say, this office space is willing to give me the rent. They're willing to give me, they wanna go there and they're paying what I'm asking.
Well, first of all, we're not short on empty space in downtown Sioux City. So anybody that goes in downtown Sioux City is a plus. I don't care if they close at 5 o'clock. If they're there eating lunch and they're actually parking in our ramps and those sort of things, it's a plus. And you are gonna have a difficult time when you can't even get your existing merchants to agree on what signage ought to look like, what their hours ought to be and all that sort of stuff. Till all of a sudden start to say to landlords, we don't want you to rent to that type of business. It's gonna be difficult. Cause I'm gonna tell you something, if I own a building and somebody's gonna pay me the rent I want, I don't care.
Yep.
Because most of those guys are not making any money on their property. So it's tough, Alex, because...
I get it.
I mean, it's just not gonna happen the way we want it to happen. Anything, something in a building is better than an empty building, in my opinion. And we have space left over is my problem.
And that's what I was getting to, Bob, is understanding that piece, but also letting them know that if we were to come to something, bring something to them. If we were to say, hey, this is the perfect spot for X, Y, and Z, and here are the people to fill it, we would hope that they give us that opportunity. It's just opening their minds to that. Like, if you have someone, please let us know because odds are good. We can bring you two or three other people that could also be great for that space. So please, talk to us and consider that. Don't just go for the first thing that comes through your door. So with that, yes, I agree. They're not like Dick Salem. They don't know sometimes what we've been working on the last two days. And so we have to go, it's our job to go to Dick and say, hey, we've got four people on this space. What are your thoughts? We know that's something that we need to be pushing stronger for and finding those people.
And I think that the campaign that you're doing within the windows, the spaces that are available and dreaming here, I like that, bringing it to people's attention and seeing it. But I think having a database of some type that says, these are the spaces available, this is what we could do. And then I've offered multiple times, and I hope that it actually happens, of going and talking to different cities and saying, okay, these six, seven businesses would be perfect on our downtown. We have the space available. Let's get them down here because it's gonna take that critical mass. I was literally at the craft fair this weekend over in South Sioux at the Delta that, talking with a little boutique owner. And she said, I would be willing to come to Sioux City. I would look at that space. But I would never put all of that on her as a small business owner if we just have one. Because you have to have kinda that critical mass of five or six, at least of those businesses, people are gonna walk around downtown to. But I think that we can build up that effort. And then I think there are those empty spaces that I think you can really build something there. And I hope we can get...
The other thing that we have to, I know Mr. Padmore doesn't wanna hear this, but we sometimes have to have a little bit friendly or building plan review department because we had a young guy that wanted to do a pizza place not very far from your office.
Yep. 412.
We, it was very difficult for him to make a deal to work in Sioux City. So he finally threw up the white flag and left. And that building sits empty today because of that. I mean, there are ways that we can enforce ordinances and rules. And then there are ways that we can do everything we can to work with those people to try to be helpful in ways to make it work and that, without compromising the building code. And sometimes when you have that type of person that you're talking about, they're not very well-versed on what it takes to redo a building.
Negotiating them.
And rather than say that our standard answer around here is, and I'm being critical, Bob, and I'm trying not to be, but I had a little bad week with your department there, is we say, go get an engineer. Well, you know what? If you could afford an engineer, you wouldn't be looking at the places that have the cheapest rent. I'm sorry. So what can we do to help those people? You need to be prepared for that because right now, it's not their fault, but they're not set up to do that that very well either.
I agree. You tell me, Bob, what to do. I mean, cause I would totally be on board with that. The other thing that I've heard from small business owners is they not only don't know how to navigate the system and what to do. I think that that deters them. But also what I've heard is they want space downtown. And so then they go and look at the space. And just to bring it up to the point where someone would walk in there and wanna buy something, they're gonna have to invest 15 grand just making the space look desirable for them to put their things in. And so what small business owner has 15 grand that they can just bring the building up to where someone's gonna wanna walk in the front door and then put their merch in and hope that they have enough foot traffic to garner more sales? You know what I mean? Like, that's the other thing that I worry about, that I've heard from small business owners, that it's like, well, why would I do that when I have to make so much investment? And I don't know if that's landlords or...
Well, you're a young guy and you're looking for a project. What you need to do is work with the city. And we need to develop a no-interest, pay-back loan, unlike the facade program, that maybe we're that vehicle to give them the 20% they need to go to a bank to get the 80%. Because if it's on the backs, if our loan's on the backside of a bank loan and it's zero interest, the bank's probably not gonna have a problem believing that that's equity because we don't get our money till they get their money. And you're gonna have some losses there.
Yeah. But you hope that you make some smart investments. And you have that growth down there and then the different... Get this stuff either. I just, I hear a lot of the ideas and I'm more than willing to help. And I mean, even campaigning, you hear a lot about people wanna help small business, help small businesses. Well, you tell me how. You know what I mean? I don't know what we as a city can do to really make it beneficial. We've talked about different projects that, and I know various entrepreneurs that came here to the city felt that they hit a brick wall and went to South Sioux and opened shop. I mean, I don't want to lose out on those opportunities. So yeah, Bob, if you have ideas, I'm new to this whole city government thing. I'm trying to navigate my way and do the best I can. So any ideas, I would welcome it. I would be happy to champion endeavors like this. So I appreciate all the work that you both are doing. And I hope you see some advocates up here because I think that we all want to see that grow as well and none more so than myself, so.
Andy.
Uh, Andy.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any citizen concerns? If so, please come forward, state your name and address for the record. We have students in the audience today?
We do.
Where are we from?
Morningside.
Yeah.
Is that a college in town? Glad to have you. You have an academic advisor out there that's any good or?
Uh-huh.
Come on! Get out of here, I tell you what. Mr. Gradkin?
Quickly, I attended the Neighborhood Network meeting last Thursday evening. That's a group that kinda oversees the whole neighborhood coalition organization. And they meet every, I guess that's the second Thursday of every month over at the police department. And they shared that, and this is a little ways off yet, but Thursday, January 11th, they'll be promoting another family night out at Long Lines Family Rec Center from 5:30 to 8:00. I think they've got Smithfield to be volunteer their efforts like they did with the National Night Out for some food. And I think that's great. And they'll have an obstacle course down there that they're working on. There'll be wall climbing, basketball, police fire participation. So really a great family event. So on Thursday, January 11th, 2018, you might wanna mark your calendars. I'm sure we'll talk more about that. They also had a few other issues that I've spoken briefly with the city manager about. But, and I'll call Matt. One of them was, if you remember, when the ribbon cutting for the splash pad at Leeds, and then the question about where do we, do we have restroom facilities? And Dale Street Park is hoping that maybe the city can help them out next summer with that. And they also would like to see some financial support from the city. I encourage them to ask and come forward to council and talk about what their needs are and to share with us. So hopefully, they'll take the initiative to do that. But it's a good group. They're represented by every, I think there are, I didn't bring my sheet. I think there's eight or nine neighborhood coalitions. So they all participate and it's a good group of people trying to help take care of their neighborhoods, so. And I think that's, oh, I was gonna ask about, I saw the email, of course, and the mayor's comments about the trolley. Are we doing something moving forward with that? Or is there anybody that is taking the lead on that?
Well, I was interested in it and I got an email back from Jessica and she said that she would be happy to set up a meeting with Mike, the fellow with the trolley.
I know that, I know that the railroad museum people...
Yes, that's what I was gonna ask. They were...
Looking into it.
Oh, that's okay. So I said, yes, I would be interested in talking to Mike and...
If we could get the $10 million back that Marty gave away when he was a council member, we could do that, but...
Yeah, Marty.
Nice going, Marty.
Is that why he backed up in the room there in the corner?
You're stuck in the corner. Get out of there.
They couldn't wait for me to go out to council to give that 10 million back. That was a brilliant move.
It sounds like a great idea, you know, from the east end to the west end and going back and forth.
Rail, you don't need overhead lines anymore because everything runs on a...
Off electricity.
Off a battery.
Batters.
They make them right down in Kamakoa. I'm gonna go down, Rich Smith, I don't remember, he was an old...
Yeah, I remember the name, yep.
I'm gonna go down and he's gonna try to sneak down there next week and look at him.
That was a great idea.
Would he have a separate line to go down to the riverfront? Is that kinda the thought?
Well, their plan would be to run it Fifth Street or Third Street.
But I appreciate the...
But then expansion down to the riverfront.
Yeah, I think it'd be a great idea when we get the riverfront going too. So...
Yep.
That'd be a great way to get people moving around and use our parking ramps and all that.
Yeah, Michael Padorf, it was a nice email. Yep. That's all I have.
This is, I'll make this short. I got a phone call from a gal named Jerry Morphy. She lives on 209 West 33rd. She has an issue with her alley. And it's not a vacated alley. It's, the city does own the alley, but it's, I went over there yesterday and looked at it and it's overran by trees and brush and have neighbors throwing stuff over on the side. And they, there's a ravine that comes through there that water's running through. And it's just a horrible mess. And so I talked to Mr. Padmore. And I also talked to Jeff Hansen and he's gonna check into it too. So, and I asked that you both maybe call her because I told her that you guys be able to respond to her and let her know what's going on, if we could do anything. Doesn't sound like we can. It's not vacated like, I'm sure they're not gonna wanna buy it. So we just have to explain to them what the situation is here. That's it.
That's 33rd or West 33rd?
It's West 33rd. It's right off of Lindenwood.
Yes, off of Stone Park Boulevard.
Right, yep.
Yes, okay.
Yeah. So that's all I got.
Okay, a couple of things I wanted to touch on. Number one was the Startup Sioux City, the launch week that started this last weekend. I was able to attend the kind of culmination of startup weekend that's put on by the University of Iowa Papa John Business School. Is that right? Right? I think it's put on in part by that. And so it was kinda cool to go there and see the final pitches made. There were area CEOs and presidents. Al Amar was there for Fibrocom. Lance Morgan was there with Ho-Chunk. And Darren Davy was there with US Bank as judges. And it was cool to see the different teams represented. There was teams that were comprised of students from Morningside, Briar Cliff, and Western Iowa Tech. And just hearing about their ideas of what they would like to do, not just maybe in the city, but also just kinda big-picture ideas and listening to them, to them pitch their ideas to these judges. It was, it was just inspiring. Like, I think that entrepreneurial spirit is something that is just so inspiring. And it's very cool to hear these college students. There was even one high school student that was a part of it as well. His teacher had encouraged him to join. And I think that that's something that's very cool. And that's why I really believe in what we can do with those entrepreneurs and help them achieve those dreams, whether it's downtown or otherwise. I think that there's a lot of good return on that investment. So it was cool to be a part of that this weekend. And then coming up, the rest of this week as we have launch week, let's see. So the next thing is going to be on the 14th, which is what, tomorrow? Tomorrow, there's a whole way to improve your business information where customers search you most on Google. And so there's a Google-like training, how you can optimize that. Search engine optimization, I believe is the term used most frequently. There's a noon session. Where's this one at? Does anyone know where?[1732.03] Huh? ISU Design West. Is everything there basically, right? Most things or some things? Well, yeah, give or take. So if that's happening, that's at noon, um, at ISU Design West. 2:00 PM is the Spanish session of that. Um, so make sure to check that out tomorrow. Wednesday, there's Biz Brew, um, at the Diving Elk. And so it's entrepreneurship, networking, beer. Come on, what else would you want? Uh, so hit that up. That's 4:30, food too, I think. 4:30 PM to 7:00 PM at the Diving Elk. And then, um, yeah, there are other ones. There's another one coming up. Check out, I think it's the, um, west coast, IAwestcoast.com, if I remember right. Check that out, uh, for more of the events. It all culminates with the, um, business, is it business for breakfast? Right? Thank you. Business for breakfast happening at the Orpheum Theater this Friday at the Orpheum, uh, 7:30 AM. The art of being unmistakable. Why only is better than best? Um, so he's a, he's a bestselling author. Going to talk a little bit about that. So it should be a great time. I would encourage everyone to attend. Uh, let's see. This last Veterans Day, I went to the courthouse, um, courthouse on Saturday and saw that ceremony. It was really powerful. Um, it's really powerful and I really want to thank, um, all those men and women that dedicate their lives to serving this country. Um, really appreciated that service and it was a great ceremony, uh, recognizing that. And so that was really, it was great. And
That's already three things. You said you only had two.
I think that's all I got, boss. Few things. Did I say a few things? Is that what he said?
A couple.
A couple? I got a couple things.
That's two.
I got you.
I've got to add one thing. I ju, I just got a text from, um, uh, Steve Hansen from the museum. And he seems, he says that he believes in 2007, Webberry County registered the trademark name for Sioux City Sioux.
That's correct. They did. The trademark, but not the copyright. They trademarked the name, I believe.
The name of the song?
So the copyright is the song.
Right.
Okay. So we're not going to, we're just going to do the, we want to do the notes, not the, not the song.
Maybe two different issues, the trademark and the copyright for the painting.
See, copyright is a name because I copyright the name of the band. It's
Okay. So copyright would be the
No, I copyright. It's the same department, copyright, trademark department.
Trademark
But I have a trademark because you got to have a mark because you have to send them the logo.
Right. And then the copyright would be the actual music portion.
I'll raise some money for that too. How's that sound?
There you go.
So we registered that. So we're good.
This, the county did. So we may be able to use it. That's something we
Well, you just have to get permission from them to
Okay. So like trademark, okay. So we could say Sioux City Sioux, but and, and
As long as you didn't have the notes, the exact notes of the song.
Well, we can mess them up a little bit. As long as it says Sioux City Sioux up there, right?
We'll see.
That's Rick would disagree.
Song anyway.
Right.
I forgot one more thing. Can I have one more thing? I'm sorry.
Okay, one more.
One more thing. So, um, this Thursday, this is a, a group that I've been a part of and I, I see a lot of, um, men in the audience. I would ask you, um, to maybe attend this. Coming up this Thursday, there's a group called the 100 Men Who Care. I'm not sure if you've heard of this. It's across the country, across the state. What it is, is it's an opportunity. There's also a group here in town of the 100 Women Who Care. This Thursday is the group for men, uh, getting together at 5:00 PM, I think is when it starts at the Wheelhouse Bar and Grill. And so the whole premise of this is that like, I give a lot of time and energy to different organizations. This is an opportunity to make a big financial impact to an organization. So any, any men, a man can come. Exactly. And so what the premise is, you try to get 100 men together. And if you know of a 501(c)(3) or an organization that's worthy, you put the name into a hat. They end up drawing three names and that individual pitched the organization, right? Pitched the nonprofit to talk about, and then everyone in attendance votes on who gets the money. And at the end of the night, every single person, hopefully the 100 that show up, write a $100 check. And then you get $10,000 to go to that organization. And so the reason it's cool, it just meets quarterly and it's just a chance that it's not a huge financial contribution. Um, but it's a chance to make a real difference in these organizations. I, I thought that I knew a lot about the nonprofits here in town and I have heard about so many more than I ever, ever knew. And there's just great need in our community and the opportunity to give $10,000 to an organization is incredible. The men and women's group have been doing big things, but please, if you can, there's no commitment. If you show up, you just want to see what it's like the first time. That's great. Uh, it's 5:00 PM again at the, the Wheelhouse Bar and Grill over there in Morningside, kind of, um, by, by Applebee's, if you will, that stuff. So
You lend Pete and I a hundred bucks a piece so we can go or?
Oh, I think you guys can handle that. I think
Pete's been doing it for two years.
Have you?
You, you two guys are in, then Dan and I don't have to go then. Good for you. I appreciate it.
I've been in for a couple of years myself for the women.
Good for you guys.
Anyway, I would
I appreciate what you do for the community.
Anyone that has any questions about it, please reach out, but otherwise I would love to see more people represent.
When is that Thursday night?
Yes, Thursday night. Okay. Well, just send me your check. I'll tell you where it's going.
It's, it's a lot of fun too. Um, last quarter, I believe that the men and women, we had ours together.
Which was really cool.
Down at the bodega. Yeah. And, and that was a big, a big amount of money going to the charity that, that we picked. So that was drawn. So yeah, it was a good thing.
Think of more things I need to say.
Talk about the veterans, um, celebration that we, that ceremony that we went to.
I will. I have it on my list.
Okay.
I have lots of things on my list. Fort and Hammel, stoplights been out about two weeks. Is there a reason we can't fix a stoplight on one of the busiest intersections in the community?
Yeah, the truck that hit it broke the base of the repouring the base. They had to order, uh, the reinforcing and have to take it out and rebuild the base.
And that's taken two weeks.
We weren't planning on doing it. The truck hit it and took off.
Uh, within the next week, would you give Mr. Padmore your ideas about fireworks at Christmas and July's? Because on two weeks from today, we're going to have that on the agenda.
Okay. That'll be easy.
Okay.
Can you send out an email to everyone?
Those rules are coming out December 8th, I believe.
Well, we can have our rules ready to go then.
Actually 48 hours.
So we, we can't have until December 8th?
Yeah.
The hearing on the proposed rules is December 8th. We just
What day is that?
It's a Friday.
Okay. Well, well, we won't have it on in two weeks, but at least we can give you our ideas of what we're thinking so that we can get that ready to go right away then.
Right.
Okay. Is Matt here? Did he leave? Spalding Park came out great, except for why do you pour sidewalks that don't go to the edge of the parking lot? One does and three of them, or two of them don't. They just stop in the middle of the dirt on those, on that walking trail.
I thought it was going, I thought it was a complete oval or circle.
It is, but to get on it, they poured two little stubs out that don't go into the parking lot. And then in the middle, one does. And the other thing I think you're going to probably need there is having a basketball court there without a fence means the balls are going to go in that ditch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we need to look at that probably in the spring. We, I did go with the same one with Alex went to. I thought John Mansfield, who's a friend, gave a nice, very nice talk. Well, you were there.
Yeah, I was there. Really nice.
Most all of us went, you didn't get to the ROTC one. That was, uh, I've done a lot of veterans deals over the years of being there, but the, that ROTC one in particular, those young people did an outstanding job. What a program they have with that in the school system. That was, um, very, very impressive. Uh, I think the parade for the downtown partners is the same night as the march for Native American kids.
It is. It is.
So how are we, uh, how, how are we coordinating that? Because probably not all of us are going to make the parade if that's okay. I mean, somebody needs to be at that deal. It starts at 4:30 and I can't remember
I think it's supposed to adjourn at 6:00.
It's what?
I think it adjourns at 6:00.
Okay. And it's 4:30 where?
I believe the public museum. I'll
Okay. That won't be so bad, except for
Let me double check and I'll get back. Yeah.
Okay. Let us know on that. All right. That's it. Anybody else have anything?
I did. You gave me too much time. I got to think anymore. I wanted to bring this up and Ian, I apologize. I don't want to, um, only isolate you, but it's something that I've been thinking a lot about. Um, and it came up specifically with the water tower. Is sometimes we put these posts on Facebook or on your Facebook, on the Sioux City Journal, I'd say your, like yours personally. The Sioux City Journal's, uh, Facebook page or their comment section and stuff like that. And there's so much incredible negativity. And that just, it really bothers me. It really does. And I, and I think that that's not, that's not the intent. That's not the hope of the journal or anything like that. But one thing that I would love your help with, and if you want to run it up the chain and see what they think, anything. I think we need to showcase on your page elsewhere, where even in the paper, whatever you want it to be. Of all of the opportunities that people have for public comment and input to come here to the council, how they can reach out to us, what these public input meetings look like, how can they have a seat at the table to give their ideas? Like, look at the riverfront for one. Everyone can be a keyboard cowboy and sit behind at home and say, oh, this is what it is, or this is what you should do, or the city's wasting our money here. But I sure don't see emails and I sure didn't see, there was like 59 comments on the journals. One about the painting of the water tank. How many people came here to talk about it tonight?
One.
I, I just don't understand where the disconnect is that
What was their comment primarily?
Oh, just that it was a huge waste of money and of course the city's going to do this and, and just
Stupid idea.
Yeah, just a terrible idea. And it's just frustrating.
Well, get used to it because I've had 20 years of it. It's not going to change. Just do your job every Monday and don't worry about it because
And you know what? Don't entertain yourself with it because I've
Oh, I know. Yeah, I know. I don't read it. I don't read it.
All right. One more thing I forgot. In case you didn't, did you guys get this? Our, our housing division scored 100. Congratulations to them. Good job.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. That's very good. So anybody else have anything? I move, we adjourn.
Hey, Brad?
Hi.
Gratkin?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Water.